All right. We'll go ahead and call the Esticated Planet Commission meeting to order today is July twenty eighth, twenty twenty two at seven oh one. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Perkins is not here yet. Commissioner Ennis.
Here.
Commissioner Sager.
Here.
Commissioner Hawks.
Here.
Commissioner Mangus is not on, and Chairman Wheeler.
Here. So we got enough for a quorum. All right. First official business is approval of the April tw- April twenty seventh, April seventh.
May twenty sixth.
May twenty sixth. You know, we got to look back to it here. Okay. May twenty sixth meeting. And we're gonna have to look through the link here. Give me a second. I don't believe I was at that meeting, so it's one of you guys.
I had it. You went there. And I moved to approve those minutes.
So we got a motion? You have a second? In a second? Any discussion needed on those?
No, no.
Okay. All those approved. Let's just raise our right hand on these ones. Okay. First public hearing we have is annexation twenty twenty-two dash zero four dash annex. Applicant Kelly and Jeremy Hickman proposing annexation of two properties off of Strewbar. So with that, Taylor, you want to go into the staff report?
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna put the PowerPoint up here. There we go. Okay. All right, so this is twenty twenty-two dash oh four dash annex. The project name is three one five four zero Southeast Strewbar Lane. And so tonight, the Planning Commission is going to forward their recommendation to the council. The council will issue the final decision at their meeting on August eighth. That's a Monday. And that decision is final unless appealed to Luba. And if it is approved, I'll also just note that the council then will put the annexation into effect by adopting a resolution at a subsequent meeting, which will finalize the annexation into city limits. And that resolution does not get passed until all of the conditions of approval are met. Okay. Little information about the applicant and the property. The applicants are Kelly and Jeremy Hickman. And the properties we're looking at are lots fifteen hundred and sixteen hundred of tax map thirty-four E seventeen DC. Only one of the lots is addressed, and that is three one five four zero Southeast Strewbar Lane. And that is the westerly parcel. The comprehensive plan map shows that the property is indeed entirely within the urban growth boundary. That satisfies the code requirement for annexation that's there at the bottom. It needs to be inside of the UGV. This vicinity map shows incorporated areas shaded tan and unincorporated areas are white. And so this is important because the the second requirement for annexation is that it needs to be it needs to be adjacent to city limits. And so, yes, indeed, city limits are there on the northern boundary of these properties. Section sixteen point one two four point zero three zero is the part of the code that lists the approval criteria that need to be met in order for the council to approve an annexation. And so that's these three, and we're about to go through them one by one here. So the first one is just compliance with the Esticated Comp Plan. And with the designation on the comp plan map, the applicant is not proposing any zoning that's different from what is designated on the map, and that is central mixed use. Therefore, this criteria is met. The second is availability of city services, so that includes sewer, water, and streets. As is required for application submittal, the applicant provided a capacity statement from the city engineer documenting that, yes, the city's water and wastewater systems can accommodate the potential future development that would be expected on these properties according to the density and types of uses that are allowed in that zone. The complication for this approval criteria is that tax lot sixteen hundred, which is that westerly lot with the single-family home on it, does not have any frontage on either a public or a private street. You can see on this aerial imagery that Strewbar Lane is actually part of a private property. It's like the flagpole of a flaglot. And so the access to that property is just via an easement along that flagpole. So future development is just going to require something to remedy that. Either, you know, either Strewbar Lane will be, you know, through the development process, will have that be dedicated as right-of-way or turned into a private street. Or in the future, if if these properties along Strewbar want to develop, the city could require the dedication of some right-of-way to or the creation of another private street on their properties to make sure that these properties all have frontage on the street. So that's captured in the approval criteria is there's a condition of approval, making sure that the applicant, before before the resolution comes to the council, the applicant will sign a waiver of remonstrance, basically agreeing to either dedicate right-of-way or improve frontage on Strewbar Lane if it stays a private street. The last of those three approval criteria are is that we need to make findings regarding the availability of police, fire protection services, parks, and school facilities. So the city contracts with Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for police services, and the the level of service is determined in that contract according to, you know, the population and the the need identified, you know, that gets reviewed on a yearly or every other year basis regularly. And then the properties are already within the Esticated School District and the Esticated Rural Fire District. Both of those districts received notice of the annexation and did not submit any concerns. And then there are two public parks within about a half mile of the subject property. All of these findings satisfy this approval criteria. And so that brings us to the recommendation, which is to approve the application. And with four conditions of approval, three of them are kind of just administrative and probably don't need much discussion. The first one just clarifies exactly which properties we're talking about. The third one is the the third and fourth ones are the process by which the city will finalize the annexation. And so the second one is what well, we might want to talk about, which is that the the recommended conditions here are to require that waiver of remonstrance to ensure that the future development of that property will involve establishing frontage on either a public or private street. And then the second one here is providing any revisions that are required by the Department of Revenue to the legal description and the illustration of the property that they submitted with their application. The Department of Revenue needs those in order to process the taxing district boundary change. And so we want to make sure that if we're annexing the property, providing city services, we should also be taxing them appropriately. And so we need the Department of Revenue to accept those, that description and illustration in order to finalize the annexation. So they will need to have that done and have the waiver of response of remonstrance done. And any other conditions that the Planning Commission might find required, but these are what's recommended. So next steps for tonight are any questions you all have? We'll take any comments or remarks from the applicants. We'll hear any public testimony, and then you'll issue your recommendation.
Any questions at this point in time, Planning Commission? I have a couple. So on the letter of remonstrance, going back to the Deuce Road subdivisions, we were talking about block length and too many roads. Can we put another road on there next to Strewbar? If if they offer a half street easement or whatever that is, are we going to allow that, physically allow that?
So you mean, when you say next to Strewbar, you mean like?
Well, I don't know. Yes, it's two properties just south of Strewbar. Strewbar, like you're explaining, there's a flagpole or a cherry sandwich, whatever you call it, for the flaglot. It's not actual, it's not going to be the access for these properties for the subdivision, right? With the current easement situation.
Well, I don't know. It they're not proposing any development. So there's no change to access to any access at this point in time. But in the fut- I think in the future, it depends on what development they would be proposing.
No, it's just, and this is totally playing the game of assumptions here. But let's just say that these are the only two properties that choose to annex at this point in time, and nobody else joins the herd. They need to get legal access to Eagle Creek Highway to get whatever amount of houses are going to be on there. If we put another road, say, on the south, or they propose to put another road on the south boundary of that property, are we gonna, as a city, allow that for block length? Too many roads coming on to a main roads.
Right.
Am I making sense?
Yeah.
Totally out in left field.
Yeah, you are. There is a, there's a minimum required distance between accesses, especially on higher classification streets. But Strewbar isn't, what I think gets complicated is that Strewbar is not actually a street.
So it's just a driveway?
So it could be considered just a, I mean, yeah, it's technically just a driveway.
So I guess the biggest thing is I don't want them to go through this whole process and get to a point where they, you know, start developing lots and say, well, we're not going to give you access because you're too close to Strewbar.
Right.
And I don't know if that, now's the time to bring that up, but the cat's out of the bag at this point.
So is it, are they willing to make that a street?
To make Strewbar a street?
Yeah.
Well, it's not part of their property, so they would need the property owner's permission and coordination on that in the first place, even if they were willing to, you know, contribute to the cost of turning it into an improved street or or just, you know, recording it, you know, I don't know if you would call it plating, but plating it as a track, you know, a private street gets platted as a tract.
So why are they plating it if they don't have access anywhere?
They're not, yeah.
They have easements to it currently, right?
Right, yeah.
Right through all the properties.
Through it, I, my understanding is that the easement just runs along the the flagpoles.
Okay, but if they can't make a street street out of that, and the owners besides yeah, and like a jerk like me, just kidding. Then what do they do? They just waste their time? And money?
Well, I think I think they would look at options like what Ben was saying is is could they, in the future, if they're going to develop the lots and it would require, you know, access on a public street for this western lot, could they punch some right-of-way through the southern end of the property? Or would the city say, no, that access on Eagle Creek Road is too close to the intersection with Strewbar? I think the city would not say that because Strewbar isn't actually a street.
It's a driveway. And is it currently a county street? Or that's part of the?
Eagle Creek is currently county right-of-way.
And Strewbar, because this is an annexation, so everything north and west of Strewbar is county, right?
So Strewbar is incorporated.
Oh, yeah.
So Strewbar Lane is in city limits, and everything around it is not.
Remember that. Okay, and I, I don't want to cause a hiccup in any of this, but it's just fresh on the Deuce Road stuff, because we had quite a few conversations about it. As long as there's an avenue for them to be successful, I would say it's probably.
Well, that's still, that's the whole point, yeah.
Okay. My other one, that's totally not related, but in this packet of information. The average dry weather flows are approximately one hundred seventy gallons per day EDU. I don't know what EDU is. Is that household or sewer?
I don't know what EDU is.
It's probably in here somewhere. Wet weather flows are three hundred and seventy gallons per day. There's a lot of talk, and again, this doesn't pertain directly to this annexation, but there's a lot of talk at higher levels of the city of building a new wastewater treatment plant. But when your dry flows to your wet flows are over double, it seems like it's not the actual wastewater treatment plant. It's a infrastructure that's in the ground problem with all the INI. Has that been discussed at a higher level?
That has been, that has been discussed.
Is there like a big push to like just leave the wastewater treatment plant where it is then? And deal with what we have versus go five miles out and spend kajillions of dollars to fix a problem that's in the city?
I'm not sure where, may, I don't know, maybe Paul could speak to where the council stands on.
Well, does the, does the work that they're doing, if the old mill plant addressed that? Because I know they're working to improve the to fix all the drainage that's in there as well, too.
Yes, they are working on, I don't, and I wish I was more had a more intimate understanding of of all this. But yeah, they are addressing some like leakage and infiltration issues.
Is this a current McCloud, or is it, it's, because I know the city, there's a few people in city council that are really pushing.
This is a current McCloud.
So it would be good to take it up with him.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I would think so. And from, and yeah, I'm, I don't have any numbers or anything in front of me, but I know what what he's addressed is there are a lot of things that have been done to improve the efficiency of the INI already to help out. And in my understanding was the big, big part of that would have been the mill property as well, too, because there was stuff leaking into the pipes there. So the city's got budgeted in, I believe, for this year to get that addressed.
I know, and I know they were doing work on it, so maybe that'll help quite a bit of it. It was just kind of alarming reading through here, so. Anyway, that's my only two questions for now. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Thank you, Taylor. And Paul. Do any members of the commission wish to abstain or declare export aid contact on this? I should have asked that before. So right now, we're gonna exit out of the public hearing and go, or stay in the public hearing, excuse me, after I read this statement about evidence. An issue, an issue which may be the basis for appeal to the city council must be raised prior to the close of the public record at the final evidentiary hearing on a specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity as to afford the planning commission and all parties' adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford the planning commission and the party's adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the city council on that issue. With that, would the applicant like to come and speak? Do we have the applicant here? Oh, if you guys wanted to just come and introduce yourselves, and you don't have to, but it's if you guys want to step to the mic and then give your address for public record and all that stuff, and then give us a Cliff's Notes version if you want, or whatever you want.
Jeremy Hickman with my wife Kelly here. We, we live in Beaver Creek. You want the address of the, where we live, or?
Sure.
Two three zero eight five South Beaver Creek Road. So we have the property at fifty-one or thirty-one four five forty, Southeast Strewbar. And if you could go to that the map, the plat, I could explain what we had in mind, but so that, my knowledge is a separate lot. That one has a residence on it. The reason for bringing it into the city limits was per county, there's not enough spurt footage there for the zoning. Separate the lots and do anything with it. How they're separate is beyond me anyway, but this lot here, I was looking at future development. And leaving this one as a, as a residence, which I think as long as it stays a residence, it can go on. We might do a lot more investment. So it's smaller than the house. Like, kind of my thinking was something like business condos, I guess, I don't know, you have to some roll-up doors offices for like a contractor, have some little bit of frontage and have a storage and a little office there. That was, that was an idea. I haven't really gone much farther than ideas so far, but. So our plan was to use this other access to the, since we did development. And probably not doing anything with this actual house, and leaving it access through bar. Okay, that's kind of the plan anyway.
That helps.
Yeah.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thanks for being here, and thanks for explaining that for us.
Thank you.
And I don't mean to push you out. If you want to say more, feel free. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on behalf of the applicant? Pretty light crowd today. Okay. Does anybody want to speak on in opposition? I'm guessing nobody wants to speak in neutrality on it, so let's go to the staff. Rob can have any additional comments, no public testimony, so we're good there. So we need to vote to close the public hearing and enter into the planning commission. I get a motion for that?
A motion to close the public hearing, going to the planning commission?
All right, I got a motion.
Second.
Yep, we've got a second there, so let's go ahead. We'll enter the planning commission meeting, and then now we got to decide on which direction we need to go with it. And our options are kindly laid out up there. Prove with conditions as presented, prove with more conditions or less. Any changes we deem necessary and we're deny the applicant altogether. All of which ends up at the city council. Is that correct?
Yes.
So do we need any more discussion? Do we have any motions to approve this? I'd love to, but I can't.
I make a motion, move to approve with conditions presented by the staff.
I second it.
All right, I got a motion. We got a second. Any further discussion needed? All right, all those in favor, let's raise our right hands.
There's one up there.
I'm on Zoom. I'm yes.
Oh, we got, we got six voting yes. All right.
I don't know if anyone knew I was here. Hi.
You kind of snuck in. That's all right. Thanks, Tara. And Gary, you're up there, too, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, so that's approved, six to zero. So you guys will move on to the city council now. Taylor, Taylor will help coordinate that ride and the dates and all that stuff and any additional information, which I doubt there will probably need to be any, since there's no appeals. And typically, it's what, three to four weeks?
Till?
Till the city council.
City council.
Or is this a short one?
August eight. Yeah, it's shorter this month, so August eighth, Monday, August eight. Yep.
Okay. It's good, just in case they ask questions, and if you can kind of point out the map and kind of explain your.
Just like you did tonight.
And we meet via Zoom as well, too. So we've, we've had folks show up on Zoom and speak that way as well, too.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks, guys.
You're welcome to stay, but.
You're free to leave.
You are freely.
Okay, so we're going to move on to our next, I want to see if I can find my agenda here. We're going to postpone item B on this agenda, subdivision twenty twenty-two dash zero one dash S to the September twenty-second meeting. And we're going to jump to item C, which is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven.
Do we have to do anything official, postpone it, or they already did it?
I think it's already been posted, so we should be good, right?
Yes.
We'll move on to double oh seven then.
The hearing is continued. I mean, I don't know. Do they need to say anything other than announcing that it's continued to September twenty-second?
We're good?
Well, I guess as long as the applicant knows that it's been moved.
They requested it, yes.
I'd say we're all right then. Yeah. All right, so let's go jump into that item C. These are some code amendments for Title sixteen of the Esticated Municipal Code. And again, we'll hand this back to the planners. Taylor and Alan, are you guys both in on this, or just Taylor?
I think I'll do most of the talking, but Alan, feel free to chime in.
Don't be shy.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh oh seven, amending several sections of Title sixteen Development Code that pertain to marijuana retail, also known as dispensaries. I'll use those terms interchangeably. Once again, the Planning Commission will be forwarding their recommendation to the city council. The city council will make a decision on this at their meeting on Monday, August eighth. And that decision is also final unless appealed to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals. So little background, this code amendment was drafted at the request of the council. They've had several conversations now culminating in their interest in changing the rules and process for allowing a dispensary or dispensaries in the city, but starting with just one. And so the goal, yeah, the goal is just to allow one dispensary to open up in the downtown zone, except not within one hundred feet of Broadway or Main Street. And the one dispensary will be selected by the council through a competitive apple, application process. Currently, dispensaries are only allowed in the general, commercial, and highway commercial zones, so C dash one and H dash C zones. But they can only be allowed through a conditional use approval. And only if they're located outside of the minimum separation distance buffers, which those buffers prohibit dispensaries within one thousand feet of parks, schools, churches, daycares, sports fields, and other places where children congregate regularly. So I have a map here that shows where dispensaries are currently allowed. Sorry if it's kind of small, but outlined in yellow is the only area where currently you could put a dispensary and still only then if you get a conditional use approval. So that's none of, none of the properties that are in the central mixed-use zone, or sorry, the general commercial zone are actually, you know, outside of those buffers. So it's kind of silly for that zone to allow it at all if you have the buffers precluding the entire zone. But you could have it in the highway commercial zone, which is, yeah, a lot of that zone is outlined in yellow up there right now. But a lot of those properties are also already developed and established with other uses and are unlikely to become available anytime in the future. So anyway. So let's look at the proposed changes. So they're proposing removing dispensaries as from the conditional uses allowed in the C one and HC zones, and add dispensaries as an outright allowed use in the downtown zone, but not within a hundred feet of Broadway or Main. And the amendment would also remove the minimum separation requirements. That's those thousand-foot buffers. And it's also going to limit the number of dispensaries to just one dispensary or the same number of liquor stores permitted by the OLCC, which is currently just one. Or the same number of liquor stores permitted by the OLCC, which is currently just one. Um, so whichever is greater, and I'll show you the code amendment language in this, in a minute so that you can see exactly how that's worded. But, uh, that, that specificity in there about the OLCC, you know, however many liquor stores they allow. My understanding, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, um, that number will go up. As the city's population goes up. So I think it's once you, you know, maybe it's at like five thousand population intervals. So once we hit ten thousand, then maybe we would be allowed to, um, select and permit another dispensary and liquor store. And so the selection process, um, the council's going to select. The one dispensary by reviewing applications and then using selection criteria, um, that will prioritize the greatest community benefit. Um, and I'm not. Up to speed on whether those criteria have been established yet, and that's not something that's going to go into the code. Um, that's something that the council will get to determine.
Not yet determined.
Not yet determined. TBD. Okay, so the language of the code amendment is here. Um. So what is newly going to be allowed in the downtown zone? And I should note that, um. In the packet, you have the draft amendment as it's currently written. So there are more. There are more amendment, you know, there are amendments to more sections than just. This section here, which is the outright permitted uses in the downtown zone, right? Because we have amendments to the highway commercial zone, removing it from the conditional uses, removing it from general commercial zone conditionally, right? So there's more to the amendments than just this section, but this is really. The meat of it. So I wanted to make sure that you've got the language up here. So what will be allowed is a cannabinoid retail business, provided that it's located more than a hundred feet from Main Street. And more than a hundred feet from Broadway Street. The maximum number of cannabinoid businesses shall be one or. The number of OLCC licensed liquor stores in the city, whichever is greater. The cannabinoid retail business shall be selected after a competitive process if the mayor and city council. Determine and make findings that the benefits associated with the business exceed the potential harm that it could cause. Okay, so that is, I think, a. Pretty good summary of, yeah, the background and the proposal. So now, um. What you and the council need to do is, um, find that the proposal, the proposed amendments. Meet the criteria that apply to code amendments. So we're going to go through those. Um, so the first one here is authorization to initiate amendments. They need to be, um, initiated because it's a legislative amendment. It needs to be initiated only. By the planning commissioner, city council. Yes, these amendments were drafted at the request of the city council. This criterion is met. The amendment procedure, um. Blah, blah, blah. The important part of this section is that, um, the planning commission and the council. Need to make findings that the amendments do not conflict with other provisions of the code. Or with the comprehensive plan. So we're looking at consistency with the comp plan and, um. Not conflicting with other sections of the code. I think we did a pretty good job of cross checking, you know, all of the places in the code where marijuana retail. Was, is listed. Um, so I hope you'll trust that. Not conflicting with other sections of the code is, uh, has been. Um, you know, reviewed. And done well. And then we are going to look at consistency with comprehensive plan goals here in a second. Um, the next one is findings. So findings need to be made supporting or justifying. Any code amendments and. Written findings will be made by the planning commission. I will write those up for you. Isn't so nice. Um, justifying your recommendation based on the approval criteria. And then similarly, we will write up the city council's finding. Findings justifying, um. Or supporting the amendments. So this criterion is also met. This is more of a procedural requirement, which we are carrying out right now. And then limitation. Um, no application of a property owner for an amendment to this text, et cetera. Shall be considered within a one-year period, et cetera. Um. This proposal is not being made by any specific property owner or developer. Nor have these amendments been considered in a public hearing, um, and denied within the last year. So this criterion is met and or not really applicable. Um, so then lastly, um, a couple of these criteria pointed us to, um, ensuring consistency with the comprehensive plan. So, um, that means looking at all twelve of the city's comprehensive plan goals. The staff report goes through all twelve, um, and explains why most of them are not applicable to this proposal. Two of them, however, are, and so that's number one and number seven. Number one is citizen involvement. So this is looking at, um. The, you know, the public process for planning and code amendments. Um, and so those policies outline who can initiate the amendments. And then what process does the city need to, to go through in terms of noticing and holding public hearings? Um, and then, so we're going through those processes. And then the goal number seven, that is, um, our economic development chapter. Those policies are geared toward promoting the diversity and resilience of the local economy. Um, that could mean designating employment lands to meet projected needs. Encouraging certain types of development, you know, creating incentive programs. Um, so this proposal. Involves a really specific type of retail, um, but doesn't change anything about where all other types of retail are allowed in the city. Um, it will effectively reduce the barriers to establishing a dispensary in the city. Um, and it's also likely to generate a significant tax revenue. Um, so for all those reasons, um, the proposal is consistent, or at least not in conflict with goal seven. And so I think that is it for approval criteria. Um, and since none of the approval criteria were found to be unmet, the recommendation is approval. And same deal as last time. Um, I'll take any questions. We don't have an applicant for this one since it's a city council proposal. And then any public testimony and then decision.
Okay. Taylor, how much, uh? How much, uh, time and effort have we put into getting the, uh, citizens? Uh, you know, take on this, other than this public hearing that we're having tonight? Do we put anything out on the internet or to find out what the, our general population thinks of this?
Yeah, um. There's been a lot of conversation over the past year, probably more than a year. Um, there was a, there was a survey, I think it was just an.
I, I can jump in. We've, we've done a couple of things. We had a workshop. Here in-house, uh, with the several different options on it. So we were gathering input from people. It was well attended on the workshop. We've had an online survey, um, that went out. We got good responses on that too. And then we also had a survey. I think it was sent out with the water bill. So we had a paper survey that was sent out as well. So we had three different methods to get. Input from the community and in the community. I was surprised personally. I, I figured it would be one way or the other, but it was pretty much fifty fifty. Once you sum everything up as to whether they were really pro or, or really against. Um, and then in terms of turnout too. Uh, I believe as councillor Dunsborough had a pie chart that she put up to show, here's all the people that responded to our surveys. Here's the tally of the people that showed up. Here's, here's the slice on the pie chart. Here's the rest of the pie chart that shows the rest of the voters in Estacada as well too. Just showing that, that, you know, sure, we had about fifty percent, fifty fifty response. Um, but we also had some people that are quite a number of people that, um. It would be perceived it didn't have a strong feeling one way or the other about this as well too.
This is one of those things, like the last meeting when the people says, we, there was their applicant. Said it would just be shoved under the carpet and nothing would be done. Remember that comment from the, the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, what, what is happening here? And, and I have a really. Opinion on this and that is, um. I was on the council at the time. When, when we developed this plan. And we had that senior citizen. Uh, now it's a community center. Full of people. Um. There was some for a lot against. So we, we made this thing. On what the people thought. We gave it to the council. You know, because I was on the committee and the council voted six to, six to, um. One, because I had the scene because I was on the committee. So what I'm seeing here is. It's almost like, why worry about what's going to happen because. It's going to be changed down the road with a new city manager or a new, um, council or whatever. You know, that's one reason I kind of stay on the thing for is just so I can remind everybody what is really happening. But we went for about, I'm, I'm almost thinking it was six months. You know. One or two times a month to get this thing. Just the way the people wanted it. Then the council comes along and. Out of, well, there's seven people now. They just eliminate the, the point. But you're, you would not get a, a yes vote out of me on anything if you want to yes, yes vote because I'm involved in. Child services, you know, I, I adopt, I'm not, let's say this way, I foster kids that have. Parents that started out, believe it or not, on marijuana. And I'm not saying everybody's wrong. Yet that marijuana is not the problem because some people need some marijuana. Okay, that's fine. But. Why make it easier to get? If they need it, let them go to the doctor and get it. Yeah. I, you know, I, the way we set it up. And I, you know, like I said, I wish I had the means, but I didn't think about it at the time, get them. But we had like twelve people on it, this community lined up. I know Richard Harvey was one of them, but. So, but, but being, being a foster parent, I, I see a lot of. Marijuana moving up. To other things. I've already adopted three kids because of that issue. And I have three other kids. I mean, it has foster, so I'm sitting here retired with six kids. Come on, you know. I hope people realize what they are really doing. And if you say this area is up here over in market, you, but what's going to happen when that? That place opens up that we just approved. There's going to be kids all over that, that food, food places over there. Yeah, you, you have kids all over, you know. And they're going to be right there. And I read something in here that. They said Molalla has no problem. Drive through Molalla. Those kids sitting on the bench right in front of that place. The, the dispenser area. So. I, I say just leave it alone, but I'm only one person, so.
Let's see what the rest of the, you guys got any questions or?
All right, comments. I do have a question and. Uh, go ahead, Tara.
Oh, no, sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at, um, section seven point one, which is the language of, of changing. Where it, it says. And I, I got kind of confused. It says the maximum number. Of cannabinoid businesses shall be one or. The number of OLCC licensed liquor stores in the city, whichever is greater. So we already have a liquor store. So does that preclude the? The, the cannabis, uh, store? Because, you know, okay, okay, we grow. We already have one cannabis and we have one liquor store. What if the second liquor store comes in and beats the cannabis store? So I'm, I'm, I'm confused in this language. I, I don't understand.
I think, I think the intent of it is that you have one liquor store, you can have one cannabis store. You have two, you can have two.
But it doesn't. Say that.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't, um, it doesn't make sense for it to say. To say that the maximum number shall be one at all. If we already have, we already have one liquor store.
Correct.
And if, if we get more than one liquor store, if the intent is to, to allow the same number of dispensaries as liquor stores. Then it would make sense for this to just say the maximum number of cannabinoid, cannabinoid businesses shall be the same. As the number of OLCC.
Yes.
Licensed liquor stores.
Yeah, I, I was really confused when I, when I read that earlier.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good catch. I'll, um. If the planning commission wants to recommend that change.
I think any way we can clean up the language, the better off we are. So I.
Yeah.
Favor that. Just to dabble in the history of what Tom was, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Tara, go ahead. You were, you were next in line.
Okay, um, I just, I have some. Real concerns with the, with the language, um, that's added in here about. The, it says the. The cannabinoid retail business shall be selected after a competitive process and there's nothing saying what the criteria of the competitive process is. If the mayor and city council determine and make findings that the benefits associated with the business exceed the potential harm that it could cause. I mean, that seems like a lawsuit. I, I don't really understand how this. That's possibly legal. I don't either. There's no chance that any other business in this town was. Held to that standard. I mean, if you go, there's like that crazy vape store, the. You know, probably ninety percent of the stuff in the convenience store next to it could be arguably. You could make the argument that it causes harm. There's a liquor store, there's a gun store, there's all kinds of stuff that is controversial to some people. I mean. I just, I would be very concerned about approving something like this and would not want, you know, I wouldn't want to be a part of, of. Approving that kind of language because it, it seems very ripe for a lawsuit to me.
Yeah, I want to chime in here that, that we worked on this quite a bit with our, uh, our city lawyer. Who has helped establish, um, similar documents for other cities as well too. So a lot of this, um, a lot of this is kicked back from him. Isn't that right? Taylor, the.
Yeah, I was going to say.
These are his recommendations as well too. And, and, uh, you know, one of his recommendations was to start conservative. That's why, you know, we were looking at one in the city. It's better to start conservative. As opposed to open it up and allow a lot of other businesses in and try to rein it in, but let's start conservative, see how things go. If things go fine, then we've got that flexibility to.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, the numbers, the numbers make, that makes sense to me. I, I mean, I have no stake in this. I don't. Smoke pot. I have no interest in setting foot in whatever store goes in, but I, I just don't. The, the making value judgments about. Harm with. It is, I don't, I don't understand how a lawyer could sign off on this and, and I, I don't under, you know, I don't understand why. It would be possible that, that one kind of business is. It has to be held up to these standards, which are not, you know, there's, again, there's no criteria in here. For the, uh, what the competitive process is. There's no criteria and how the mayor and the city council are going to determine that things. Cause potential harm in, and I mean, if I wanted to bring. My cannabinoid store here and was, and was not allowed to because it was deemed harmful. I, I would, I would bring a lawsuit. I would say, well, well, how are you, how are you having a liquor store? How are you, you know, selling? Candy bars, you know, and, and any number of things could be called harmful. I just. It, it seems so bizarre to me, honestly.
Couple more comments from me, um.
Your comment about starting low, uh I think I was kind of opposed uh suddenly, I think when I first got on the board. About the seven bicycle routes and putting, I think we had like a hundred and forty-six million dollars. We were going to uh. Uh put into that whole project, we started out one with one, and so for the last, I believe, at least three years, we've had this uh. Bicycle lane that starts from nowhere and goes to nowhere. And I'm I would bet that uh. We uh that was a good thing that we started out. Small to see how it kind of worked. Uh versus putting them all over town. Second comment is. Um since. Uh in the surveys that we've gotten. It's only been a fifty fifty. You know, shot, I went almost think that until we have overwhelming. Uh number of people that say, yeah, this would be a good thing for our city area, obviously not on Broadway or. Uh Main Street until we actually have, because obviously we all volunteer to work for the. The uh citizens of Estacada, so until they say, my thought is, until they say, oh, yeah, we absolutely. Should do this, it's the right thing to do. You know, I, we all talk to citizens all the time and still something overwhelmingly. Other than fifty fifty, you know, a toss, I think uh it should be left as it is. Thanks.
Thanks, Gary. And thanks Tara too for your comment. Go ahead.
I was gonna just reiterate what Tara said, the competitive process, that's that's open to interpretation and that will get you in trouble. What I want to know is, we don't have a police force. We're subject to Clackamas County. These places have a tendency to be broken into and robbed. It there's a lot of activity around them and uh. I want to know, did anybody look into what Clackamas County Sheriff's Department says about how many? Problems they have with those in Oregon City and. The different cities below. Did anybody look into that?
I'm not sure.
Well, I know we had asked that question, I know Melanie checked in with the other cities as well too, there was nothing significant that was brought to our attention. That would that would alter. Alter this. And they're aware, they're aware of what we're doing as well too, and um you know, and just some of the thoughts here to the. There has been multiple opportunities for the commu for community engagement, this is very serious for us as well too, this is that we've probably spent, I want to say eighteen months. On this project to get here with with uh quite a bit of reach out to the community to get input as well too, we've reviewed all of the uh what was established. For the um. When when the original buffers were established as well too, we've we've reviewed all that, all those notes, looked through all that, we've weighed all of this as well too. And I want to make clear too that we are we are still complying with the state of Oregon's regulations as well too. What we are ultimately doing is reducing some of the barriers that were put in by the city council um in in the past. And allow and some of the barriers to allow. The uh to allow retail, one retail is what we're shooting for in the downtown area, that's what we're looking to do here. Uh we'll still comply with all the Oregon laws, we still need to stay with the stay away from schools, um is it parks as well too, uh you know, the the fields. You know, we can't have things around those, so so there's there's nothing. That is being proposed here that would take. That would put us at risk of anything that that Oregon already has uh. Regulations in place on, and what we're looking tonight is just to make sure that what we've worked with our lawyer on. Making sure that these meet the conditions. The requirements is is put in here meet their conditions. For our. Our our comprehensive plans, correct, I mean, that's ultimately what we're talking about tonight.
Just because Oregon approves it. Doesn't mean it's right. I mean, you look at what they've got going on and you gotta be kidding me. You know, I mean, honestly. They made some major blunders.
You know, I'd have to agree, isn't that the whole idea of being in a smaller town? That you don't, you don't become a Portland, how many people want to become a Portland, is that what we want Estacada to be?
I I I. I can't, I cannot, like, I can we not bad on Portland, I can't, I moved here from there, I don't, I I moved away on purpose, but they're like, don't Estacada, don't Portland, I Estacada. I've had about, you know, all I couldn't handle, but that's sorry.
Oh, that's great, Tara, that's, you know, every, we all have our opinion and that's the whole idea of this.
So I think what Paul was um mentioning, and I just looked it up real quick here, um is that. Uh that thousand foot buffer would would still actually apply. Um because it's a rule at the state level, thousand foot buffer from schools and the.
Is it parks too?
Um I'm not seeing parks, but it might be in a difference, I don't, I don't know if it's true for parks.
Is it what the original time that when marijuana got approved through the state? And all the cities started drafting these ordinances. It was very strategic, going back to what Tom said, of the thousand foot buffer, everything's keyed to this bike gateway here. Because park dollars were used for this, so this is considered a park. So I'm I'm on Google Earth right now, so if you if you pull a thousand foot radius off of this park. It pretty much wipes out all of downtown.
If 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 it's if parks is is part of it, then we would not be considering this. Again, this was run by our lawyer, he was he was a big part of helping us to determine. The areas that things could be, our main consideration was let's not have it on Main Street or Broadway. That's what we kind of compromised as a group.
What's the difference between Main Street and Broadway? One about Zorbrist and Wade, because you got Subway. You got the the food places there. You you you. Yeah. Okay. I I don't know where I'm going with that, but it it kids is going to be everywhere. Yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering, because the thousand foot was. Something that was definitely brought up and particularly off the park. And like I said, if that's the case. Which there's a bunch of red line stuff on here that says. The thousand foot, but it goes into. I'm trying to figure out which zoning classifications is.
The ORS does not prohibit. Dispensaries within a thousand feet of. Parks, it prohibits within a thousand feet of schools and another dispensary.
Okay, so my mistake on bringing that one up.
Question, what are the what are the uh advantages of this? As compared to the disadvantages? So what are what are you looking at gaining? But it's for the city. Is it the money, you're gonna follow the money?
There the what we've heard from folks that are positive on this is that they travel out of town already to purchase uh their marijuana products. This would allow a more convenient location, and some people do use it for medical purposes. And it would be an easier uh more convenient place to come to stay within their own town. To be able to purchase it here in Estacada and not have to go out of town to do that, so that that's a big part of it. And then it's also. The the other parts that that were discussed, people travel through, it would be a chance to um be able to. Have tourists stop here as well too, instead of just heading right up river grabbing something on the way before they go up there as well, so so this is something that would um. That would meet. The what what folks are doing already and allow it to be done within their city.
I would not encourage people to do that and get on that water. That's that's gonna get you dead.
The 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 promontory marina, I'm sorry, I just went to the marina for the first time, that it's like wall to wall beer signs. At the marina and there's nowhere to go but either on the lake or in your car to leave there, I mean, I I. I don't know, it just it just the the. We already have, we already have substances for sale in our town that are. From every standpoint, more. You know, they they cause more accidents, they cause more violence, they're hard on your body, they're hard on your brain. I I I share some of these concerns, but I just think it's it's interesting to me that we're having this value judgment of conversation about this and we're considering. Putting value judgments into our code when we've had, we've had less conversation about. Building subdivisions that have, you know, two hundred houses and are going to really change the character of the town.
Could we have a liquor store on uh Broadway or Main Street?
So. Zorbrist or Wade?
So it follows the same requirements?
Are you asking if we could or if we do?
Yeah, isn't, would it be allowed?
Um I'm not sure, I'm under the impression that we don't have a large enough population for the OLCC to permit a second liquor store. But it might not be a population thing.
No, I mean, if if say they close, we're comparing a liquor store and a and a pot shop.
Oh, we have, we have, we have bars on this, we have bars on Main Street.
No, I know, but we're not comparing uh a a weed shop in a tavern or a bar, we're comparing it to a liquor store. So if we're comparing that, are we allowing, could, would we allow if that one closed down, wanted to move down to Broadway, would that be allowable?
Yes. Per our zoning code, yes.
Okay, so it's the same zoning and everything. Same criteria.
Well. We we need to open this up to a public hearing and get some testimony from the crowd. If if deemed necessary. We have a lot of questions on this. It seems like thus far, a lot of the questions are around verbiage in particular. And the way things are. Spelled out. So we can circle back to all that. Revisit it. Um. I too have some questions on. Distances and all that good stuff. When we originally drafted this. We put the thousand foot on there to specifically eliminate certain areas of the city. And it seems like we're doing that currently to a lesser extent, as far as thousand foot down to a hundred. If we don't want it explicitly on Main Street and Broadway. Let's just put. They can't be on Main Street and Broadway. Because whenever there's a distance. We can interpret it. Is it from the curb, is it from the city set center of the street? Uh is, I mean, because I'm again, looking at Google Maps. Pretty much from the True Value Parking Lot all the way over to the alleyway, that means they can't have it. And then Post Office, US Bank, the vacant lot over there, high school pharmacy, through Thrift Way, we can't have it because of distances. So I guess if the if if that's our plan is to specifically eliminate places. Maybe it's better to just either. Write it down, say it's allowed on Wade Street, it's allowed on Zorbrist. Or it's not allowed in these areas. That make sense? So that at least that part's clear and it's not open for interpretation. And then the other part is, is it a hundred feet from the front door, is it a hundred feet from the property line? If somebody's got a full. Two hundred foot frontage along Third Avenue, can they put it on the far? West side if it works, but not the east side.
Right.
Is it one, so I I just clear up any of that stuff because there's obviously people that want this, there's obviously people that don't. And our job is to make a decision. And we're gonna be the bad guys no matter what we do, uh but at least we can stay. It was said we could be on Wade Street and it's in the code or whatever, so. Anyway, um. Any other questions, comments, concerns at this point? Gary, questions right now or can we go into the public testimony? He's muted, I think you're muted, but. And Tara, I was gonna ask you too, are you?
Yeah, I just have a quick clarifying question, so the way this is written, just so that I'm understand if I if I'm understanding it right. There's a. Uh you know, there's, they have this process, somebody uh uh for for people to basically apply to have a a store in the town. And then. At that point, the mayor and the city council, even if we've chosen where it can be and all this stuff and. Um then the mayor and the city council can say, okay, well, actually, we decided this is going to cause more harm than good. And you can't come here, is that is that? A possibility with the way this is written?
Yes.
With the way this is written, yes, kind of, but it would be, they would, they would make that finding according to the. Um like evaluation criteria that they would. Ad adopt, and I assume it's going to be adopted by resolution or something like that, but it would be, they would need to make findings. Um for all of the competing. Um dispensaries according to the same criteria. Demonstrating, you know, justifying how. Those criteria weren't met and the criteria would be established according to what they thought would. Provide benefit or cause harm. Correct me if I'm wrong, Paul.
That that's my understanding too.
I mean, that's a har- harm is just so benefit and harm is so subjective, I mean, you know, that's that's my concern here, it's like, it kind of looks like you would go through the whole process, they can choose. Which one gets the bid, but then from there they can be, they can say. This causes, this is going to cause more harm than good and I'll get, you know, that just, it just seems very subjective, it's it's a hard thing to approve without knowing when. What that is and why it's not applied to other businesses for me.
Thanks, Tara, I think we're gonna revisit, we'll probably have you. Bring that up again, we'll revisit it after we get public testimony, if that's okay.
Whoops, yeah, totally.
Okay. All right, so let's do this, let's uh. Go ahead and open the uh public, well, we're still in the public hearing, so let's go ahead and have any uh. People that want to speak on behalf of this. Uh. Code amendment, please come to the mic, uh state your name and your address. And since you're the only one out here, you can tell us, we'll probably get it right away if you're in opposition or uh for this, so go ahead and step to the mic.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
My name is Kim Trupella. I am, I live on the other side, not in the city of Estacada, uh but on Spring Water Road, two two eight seven seven South Stormer Road. Um right off of Spring Water, been living there for fourteen years now and May was my fourteen anniversary. Um I come, moved out to Oregon from Illinois back in twenty twenty with my two of my three kids. And we've always lived in Clackamas County. So our first home was in Oregon City and then we uh made our way out here to Estacada and have loved it ever since, I'm currently in empty nuster. They both graduated from Estacada High School, um. When we moved from Oregon City to here, one was going into high school, one was going into junior high, so we're really familiar with town. I, you know, we all love it. Um feel very uh like this is our home. And and I'll use mine since they're they're gone, um. But on that piece of property. I am and have inherited a cannabis producing license. Or a medical business is how it started and I I converted it into a um from medical to recreational grow. Uh when that was first opening up back in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, so we are five years going into six years of. Legally licensed cannabis businesses in Oregon. I want to assure you that I not only hear all of your concerns, that I agree with every one of your concerns and the council. Also was very concerned, uh I think in fear afraid and have had. I I'm thinking it's over two years now that we've been having conversations about this. Um. What I would like to just really talk to you about. What I would like to just really talk to you about is, um, first of all, that. We as Oregonians have been growing and especially in Clackamas County and especially in Estacada since they allowed it in nineteen ninety-six. The medical program was born here. And ever since then, people in our town and our, our county have been growing cannabis plants. Legally, illegally licensed, unlicensed. That's just a fact. I think that we can agree on that. Um. It is extremely difficult and I, and I promise you, I, I can show you any number of documents by, of the OLCC. The bar that we have to meet at any license, whether it's a producer license, a retail license, a processor license, a wholesale license, and there's a license for labs as well. That it is extremely difficult and, um, probably ten times more rules that the city or the, the planning commission would have. And then we also have, in my case, I have to answer to the county as well. That is my entity for, for land use. Um. I would be happy to answer any and all of your questions, um, whether it's today or any other time. I would like to just talk to you about a couple of things that. We feel would be very helpful by having a dispensary here in town. Um, for me, and I'm speaking from a producer's standpoint, and I'm positive that you've heard about how the prices have plummeted. And that we have always as a state overproduced marijuana. That's a fact. So. Part of, part of it, um, for growers, and I'm just going to speak on behalf of growers, is that. We grow, but we don't have a place to sell because we can only sell to dispensaries. If we don't own those dispensaries and a lot of the dispensaries that exist now are what they say vertically integrated, they have those other licenses. So, so the longer the license system goes on, the narrower, or you know, the funnel starts up here, the narrower it gets. And so there's very little room for those of us who have, for example, a producer license to sell our product. And when we are trying to sell our product, it is literally for pennies on the dollar. And I'll give you a real example and I'll show you my books anytime you want. Um. A year ago, I could sell an indoor grown pound of cannabis that's been tested for sixteen hundred dollars a pound. Today, I, I can't get eight hundred dollars for that pound. And if I got eight hundred, I would be, I, I should be considered lucky. Um, conversely, those, uh, of us who grow outside either full season or where we pull tarps and do light deprivation. Um, that's gone to less than two hundred dollars a pound. It, it's, it's not worth doing anymore. So part of the pro having the dispensary from farmer's point of view. And specifically mine, if I'm awarded that license or the ability, the applicant, the applicant, uh, application process is. That I would only want to do business with the people that are literally within ten miles from here because we're surrounded. Like we're surrounded by, by farms. What that would do is keep people employed, it'd keep people in their houses, it'd keep the trimmers working and, you know, there's just a lot of staff and labor just as, as farming. Right? We have mechanics that work on tractors and equipment. We have people who trim, we have people who plant. You, you know, there's enormous amount of labor that goes into growing any crop and cannabis is no different. Um. The other thing too is that. In our, I forgot to mention one other license, there's a wholesale license and those are the guys that are killing us the most because they're not taking any less commission for being the middleman. Oh, the, the only, the only real, um, sufferers is, are those of us who are producers. Um. How that helps the city of Estacada is. The way that the state of Oregon set it up is that the dispensaries is where the tax dollars are generated. So if there's this. Um, dispensary, for example, in unincorporated Clackamas County, then those tax dollars go to, on, to Clackamas County. The, the cities, um, like Malala or other Oregon City, you know, neighboring cities. Then it goes to their city if it's in city proper. So that's, that's one benefit. I, I can assure you that, that is. Ben, I think going well, but there was a change in, um, uh, uh, on the, on the state level where. The money that, and it's very specific, you can see it on the OLCC website where the money is given. And for many years, a lot of it was given to. Um, schools, uh, police, um. And, and. Town stuff, but one of the changes that's been made, and I want to say two legislative sessions ago, is that. More is now being, uh, diverted to, um, people who, for example, need rehabilitation or. More like public services like that. And so all of those laws were made by our legislature and are also on the OLCC website. And you can see where, like, who's getting paid what based on how many dispensaries they have. So when the city of Estacada is debating one, two, six, none. The number of dispensaries creates the tax revenue. So there would be more that would come back to the state, uh, to the city. I'll give you an example, the small town of Monmouth, Oregon. Well, I'll be, it, it is a college town. There's four dispensaries and, um, they're like all right next to one another. And the, and they are in the city of Monmouth and so that just is, you know, four times their tax dollars. Um, so that, that is one benefit. I will now speak the benefit to, um, the people who. Need a medicine or B, the convenience of shopping locally. I, again, I hear you commissioners about being, you know, um. I will say, I will use the word afraid because I raised teenagers too. And we obviously don't want. To encourage or promote or have accessible cannabis to people who are not of age. Um, I, I feel passionate for that. I would serve on any, um, committee that would be keeping that away from children. I, I feel very strongly about that. Unfortunately. It's not kids that they don't, the parents aren't handing it out. They, they are able to get it even at school. And so we have a lot of work to do, even if we never allow a dispensary in town, just, just to keep that message clear to kids. Um, the fact that every household in our state is now able to grow four cannabis plants. It's impossible to keep it out of, in my opinion, it's imposs- it's, it's like, it. While I'm pro cannabis, it doesn't make sense when you, when you talk about it at that level that everybody can legally grow four plants. And then yet every house just about has children. So if you're trying to keep, it doesn't make sense to me. So I, I can, I can feel or see why there's like. Like the conflict or the question or the concern. Um. But the other thing I would also like to say is there are. I'm passionate about cannabis as medicine. My husband died of cancer. That's how I inherited his business. He. Was not only growing for himself, but other people. And I firsthand witnessed how people who. Um, no other medicine would work or a cancer patient can't, you know, they're nauseated. So. Instead of being on an anti nausea pill, they, they use cannabis as that medicine or, um. People who are opioid addicted, their medical doctors use cannabis to transition them off of narcotic medications and. And, and go plant-based or organic. Um, those are just some of the benefits, but for our community members to be able to stay local and buy local. And not have to be driving, that's a convenience for them. Another thing that the OLCC now allows, especially since the pandemic, is home delivery. So people don't have to necessarily come to the dispensary. Um, and I feel that, I feel that the, the city council. Um. Has done a remarkable job on bedding and listening and hearing, um. And also educating themselves and asking questions. So. My, I have to give the council a lot of credit and, and almost every single one of them were very much opposed. But it's gone, you know, we've had to go, go through the conversations of, of weighing the benefits and the risks and the rewards. Um, the, the other benefit that I think it would bring to the, to the, our, our town especially is the tourism. Whether you're going to Maciver Park or floating the river or going to the mountain or doing any number of things that. Estacada and Clackamas County have to offer. We should be able to capitalize and take advantage of that. It's, I have family right now in from Illinois and it's the first thing they do is like, let's go to the store to get beer. You know, and some people like going to the store to get weed. That's just what they do. That's their, their choice. Um, so I don't think that if you're allowing a liquor store, you should exclude a dispensary, especially that we're this far into, you know, um, a legalization. Um, the other, the other thing that I'd like to say is if, um. If you feel like you have questions or concerns or would like to come visit the farm or like to visit. For example, several processors I use or stores that I deliver to and. Any number of those of us on the license side, I, you would be astounded. Uh, not only about the paperwork and, and how we have to transport and. And all of that legal stuff, but also how secure and safe and, and that, um. It, it's very strict. So. I'm asking for. Not only my business, but for the local, uh, fellow cannabis growers to be able to have a place here in our town to be able to. Sell their products and, and share them with the community, not, not only legally, but also tested also. You know, away from children and, and, and all of that. So with that, I will close, but I will be happy to answer any question that you might have.
Thank you for the valuable insight. Uh, Commissioner, do we have any questions?
Yes, I have one question. So if I'm hearing you right, are you saying that? If we had one, uh, weed shop in Estacada, that, that would save your business and multiple other businesses?
Absolutely, and I would make sure of it.
Oh, so one shop here in Estacada is going to make. A, a world of just difference to you and other growers?
Yes, I promise.
Really? Inside the city versus where it's allowed now?
One of the problems that I have.
How, how far is that a mile away? Where it's allowed?
There's just no, there's just, if I could, like a winery, if I had, if I grew wine grapes, I could have a winery at my place. If I could do the same thing, if, if I grew, grew an orchard, fifteen acres of an orchard, I could also have a distillery at my place. Those are land, Oregon land use laws that are illegal right now. That's not true of cannabis. And if I could and put a dispensary on the property that I'm at. I would absolutely change, be a game changer for not only my business, but other growers. They would, we wouldn't have to go to the dispensaries where they're. At right now. We would be able to have them at our place and actually have agri tourism in our industry of cannabis. Um, which is actually a big thing.
So what, what prevents you from opening a shop down where it's, uh, allowed a mile away?
Well, number one, the real estate and where you can actually have them is very, you know, A, already taken up or B, um. You know, right on two twelve where the new Starbucks is right across from the space age gas station. I called on that, um, location and, um, it is unincorporated Clackamas County and is allowed. Um, however, uh, Starbucks contract specifically stated they would not rent there if there was, if they were going to lease to anybody in cannabis. So. Um, so, so we have any number of obstacles and, and ways that we cannot. The other thing is, is, and maybe you've noticed that there's a lot of, um. Of merging and buying out. So some of the bigger fish are eating the smaller fish. And so you'll see. A lot of the same stores popping up in, in more towns. And so they just buy up the locations and a lot of the, I don't, and. Not all, but some others are, um, heavily backed by investors or venture capital groups or Fortune five hundred companies, some even traded on the, on the stock exchange. I'm one hu- one hundred percent female business owner of not only a beautiful seventy acre piece of property and a home that sits on it, but a licensed cannabis business. And I don't want to give up equity in order to be able to make my next step. And at the same time, there's locations right here in Estacada that are, are not only suited, but. Um, the landowners are happy to do so, but they can't have mortgages. So that's another restriction because of the federal laws on, on where you. There can't be a federal loan owed on a, a real estate for, and, and cannabis moved in that, they just, they just don't allow that. Um, so there's, there's just a lot of, uh, ways that I personally have not been able to, um. Make a dispensary work for me, whether it's here Oregon City, believe me, I, I've been in, into like. Searching in five different counties. But, but. Part of my own personal problem is, is that I wanted to do it for myself because I didn't want partners. And I wanted to actually support and help my fellow growers. I, I'm not really interested in, um. You know, like high dollar, high profit. It is a lot of tax because there are no deductions at the store level. So. Almost all of it goes to tax, uh, taxes, but. The benefit is, is that I can keep my farm, uh, going and help others as well because I would be able to sell to my own self and then to, to, um. Customers or consumers.
All right, thank you for that info.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Tara, are you still with us? Tara? Yeah, we might call you back up. She's, pops on here. Since you're the only one in the audience, I ventured to guess, well, I guess we could look on Zoom. Is there anybody raising hands in the peanut gallery? Okay, so I think we can, uh. Pretty confidently exit out of the public hearing. And enter back into the planning commission meeting. Of which we have to decide what we're going to do. Um. Taylor, will you put the options up there? One option that's not on there and correct me if I'm wrong, can we table this? And let. Some time. Uh, be allowed to clean up verbiage and get a second look at this, like do a second reading?
That is an interesting question. Um. Because it's, yeah, I don't know, because the. Like that leads me to the question, okay, if, if the planning commission tabled it to give time to clean up the verbiage. And if the city council. Felt. The need to have the hearing soon anyway. Would they be allowed to hold the hearing without waiting for the planning commission's recommendation?
So could, could we recommend either, either denial or.
Table?
Table. On the agreement that we. We meet with the city council so we can get our heads together and go in that direction?
Yeah, yeah, just to confirm what you're asking, um. If it would either be deny as, deny it as presented or table it, then. I could follow up, find out whether, whether the tabling is an option. So if we tabled it, um, what would, what would the planning commission's request be? It would be that the council. Discuss. Changes according to the concerns that the commission brought up.
Yeah, I think, I mean, Tara, I know you had a concern with the verbiage of kind of selecting winners and losers. As far as the process of elimination, the mayor and city council. Uh, you've got some history.
Sorry.
I got history.
And then I, I'm trying to keep track of everybody.
Yeah, no, it, it says here, uh, the maximum number of cannaboid businesses shall be one or. The number of OLCC licensed liquor stores in the city, whichever is greater. Clarify that. Well, that, uh, that makes no sense to me.
So, yeah, I, I think just some general verbiage and I, and I don't know if we, now's the time to provide it or. We could email you individually with our rec. we could email you individually with our recommendations?
I think now would be, and I, if, yeah, if you're able to provide those now, whatever you're able to provide now, I'd say, let's try to capture it. And then if there are additional things, you can always follow up with me.
Well, and wasn't there a discussion about 100 feet versus 1,000 feet?
And I think that would be, Taylor clarified that, that which is one, it's 1,000 feet from schools and 1,000 feet from other dispensaries, not parks. I think that was a self-imposed.
So where does the bike lane go? Tell me that, how far does it go?
The bike lane?
Well, it goes down the highway.
That, that's not considered a park. This, this.
I know that, but how far does it go? Does it go all the way down the highway? Bypassed the Timber Park or what?
I would say.
Then you, then you got a problem.
But the issue is schools. Not parks, just schools.
Right.
But Ben, your concern was Main Street. Are we, do we just state Maine or Broadway? Or do we keep the 100 foot?
Yeah, I, I think whatever we choose, whatever route we choose to go, make it as clean as possible so that we have definitive answers. And whether it says no frontage on Broadway or Maine or any bisecting streets, plus the 1,000 foot radius off of Clackamas River Elementary, just clean it up in any way we can. And I know that in each code section, there's a table of context and definitions right out of the gate. So I'm sure a lot of it's spelled out there. I just want to make sure we don't get ourselves in a pickle later on and say, well, this corner of the building is actually 99 feet, but this one's 101 feet. So we're good to go.
Right. Or the building is over 100 feet away from Broadway, but this, but the property is really long and part of the property is within 100 feet. Does that, right?
Yes. And, and if the intent of the code is just to keep all the street fronted, or all the buildings off the street frontage of Maine and Broadway, then just state that in a more eloquent way.
Right. Like no, okay, yeah. We'll have to workshop that.
And then I guess the biggest thing would be doing this officially. So we would need a motion and a second and a, a passing vote to table. Did you, did Tara answer you? Uh, no. Tara, are you still with us?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. We just want to make, hopefully you've been following along here.
Yeah.
We're talking about the option of tabling this and cleaning up some of the language and then taking a second look at it?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Okay. And then your concern, if you want to just say it one more time so that Taylor could take some notes on it and hopefully clean up what, what you would like to see with your particular comment?
Yeah, I just, I just felt like the, there's, there's a lot of room for value judgment left in that, in the way that, that wording was. And I, I, I don't, it doesn't really make any sense to me why some, some things that are for sale in the town would be subject to unknown, unspecified harm versus not harm, whereas other substances that we sell here and other businesses aren't subject to that mystery criteria. And I, I didn't have any issue with like, you know, where, where, where it's chosen to, to go, you know, like if you want to keep it off of some streets and not other streets, that doesn't bother me at all. It's just that in order for something to even be here, it has to be deemed not, not harmful. And that's the thing that it just, it feels like we're opening ourselves to a lawsuit.
Okay. One question that's not quite spelled out, so assuming this passes, which is a broad assumption at this point, the way it's written, it almost seems like we're going to have several people coming and asking for this one cannaboid, cannabinoid license. What happens if nobody comes? And then all of a sudden, a year down the road, Tom comes in and two weeks later I come in. Is everybody subject to it or is it the first guy that's in the door or gal that's in the door?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if, so I think we've talked about announcing, you know, when the city will start accepting applications and setting a deadline for that round of application review. And so if we only received one, I mean, I think if we only received one, the council could still do their review and decide not to select them. And if we receive none, obviously we wouldn't have any. But then if we received multiple, but yeah, if we, if we go that route, then there would be a, a posted deadline by which the council expects to receive applications for that round of review. That's not codified anywhere. That's just my understanding from a conversation.
And judging by her comments, it doesn't sound like it's likely, but I'm just thinking kind of outside the box and trying to make this as seamless as possible if and when something goes into effect.
Right, yeah. Yes, that being, being part of the staff that's going to have to administer all that, I've worried about the same, same thing.
Okay. So planning commission, do we feel comfortable with the comments we've given to Taylor?
I can repeat those.
Yeah.
For clarity. Okay. So I have, we're going to clarify the maximum number of cannabinoid businesses shall be the same as the number of OLCC licensed liquor stores in the city. And then we're going to clarify the required distance from Broadway and Maine. Just make it very easy for staff to interpret the, the rules and how, how that distance is measured. And then try to rework or, yeah. Clear, yeah, rework the selection process to be less subjective and to involve less, if any, value judgments about harm versus benefit. Am I capturing that?
Yes. And the other thing that just popped in my head was councillor Dunsmere's, I think it was her mother, was originally an advocate for having a downtown marijuana business years ago. So like eliminating potential conflicts ventures. I mean, we all have to do that no matter what. And I know that she's moved on to other business ventures, but I, I would hate to be swayed by having somebody on that in the hot seat.
That was discussed openly.
Okay, perfect. I kind of had a little bit of run in with the downtown architectural committee. Like I think I was the first building to be built down here.
Oh, really?
And so the process was kind of janky and a little clunky. And the biggest impetus of, of the meeting was what color are you painting? And I told them I was going to paint it green. And I think I ended up painting it brown. But there was no, don't tell them, but there was no like follow-up, you know, and like making sure that I did what I said. So like.
You just did.
There's parts of it that are green and brown now. So, but, but at the end of the day, I mean, like, came to the planning commission, we were the architectural review, review committee. But at the end of the day, it didn't really matter. Once I walked out of the door, I could do whatever I want. So just making sure that whoever does this criteria follows through and there's some teeth to it, to hold whoever's doing the right thing accountable.
Right.
Which is tough because it's something we haven't ventured in.
Yeah.
Sorry.
What are we doing? Are we tabling this or are we going to?
Technically, we're not doing anything because we haven't voted to table it yet. So wait, I guess officially we need to vote to table it and then have a discussion, which we've already had. So is there a motion that anybody would like to do?
I'll make the motion to table this at the present time.
Do you want to put a timeframe, like a maximum of 30 days or 60 days or?
Yeah. Is that good for you and Taylor?
Let me look at a, no, that is not good. At the August 25th, oh, you guys are really busy. At the August 25th hearing, you're going to be reviewing the proposed housing project amendments and probably also at least one land use application, unless you hold a special extra hearing someday that month or the following month, which if, if you want to table this and, and have an extra meeting, that would open up, that would kind of smooth out the schedule a little bit. The housing project amendments are a huge package. So that's going to be a big meeting.
Can we, can we, since it's been a two-year process, could we say no later than the September 22nd meeting?
For, for this table?
To revisit.
Okay, revisit. On.
Does that sound okay to everybody?
For.
Yep. I don't want to hijack your, your motion there.
Well, it's perfect.
I'm, I'm just wondering if there should be a timetable anyway, if, if things have to be reworked. And okay, it goes back to the lawyer. The lawyer says, oh, wait a minute, I don't have time to do this. And it comes back to us and, and we're not ready. It, you know, this sounds like something that, okay, it could happen tomorrow. It could happen next week. It could happen six months from now.
Right. So this is kind of where my question comes in about if the, if the council, if the council wants to move forward with it sooner than the, you know, longer than it takes or, you know, if they don't want to wait to revise things, are they allowed by stat, you know, those procedural requirements that we need to go through for code amendments? Are they allowed to hold their hearing without having a formal recommendation from you all?
Well.
And I don't know that answer. I'm sorry.
I, I understand what you're saying. And we've given our recommendations on the items that, that we provided to you and said, these things need to be looked at and reworked, but the ultimate decision is not ours.
Right.
We've, or we pass this on to city council. And if they want to move forward with the recommendations that we've given, you know, they, they can do that.
So I don't, yeah, I hope I'm not speaking out of term. Would a recommended approval with changes to the, to this effect satisfy the planning commission? Or is it, you want to see the content of those changes in order to feel comfortable?
Yeah.
We already have a motion.
So we have, we have a motion to table.
And I second, I second that one.
So we're going to second the motion now. Now we're discussing it.
You started talking.
So let's move forward to that procedurally. And the, the city council's their own body. So if they choose to override everything that we're laying here.
And if the city council overrides it, they might as well just get rid of us. If they're going to override everything we do.
You can write a letter.
No, I'm saying now.
I, I should remind that I, you know, there's also the appeals process. So anyone who participated in the hearing submitted testimony.
All of those people.
You all participated. Could appeal their decision.
Okay. So then let's move forward with that. We're going to table it. And if they choose to override it, then.
No, you're going to take a vote?
Yeah, we're going to take a vote. That's what I'm doing right now. All those in, all those in favor of tabling this, for a date to be determined. Raise your right hand.
Yes.
All right. So it's 6-0 on that.
Okay.
So we will revisit this quite possibly.
I thought you'd last, you know, you, you have been there for a couple of months.
I know and I, I did.
We'll reach out to y'all for availability, probably for an extra hearing. Cause yeah, there's already a full agenda on the 25th and a pretty full agenda already on the 22nd too.
Of September.
Of September.
Okay. So with that, I don't think we have anything else on the meeting except for adjournment. Is that correct?
That's right.
Thanks, planning commission that came in on Zoom. We will see you in August on the 25th.
Cool. Thank you all.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.